All right, good evening and welcome to the meeting of North Penn School Directors, May 15, 2014. Somebody got a controller for our show? Yeah? We're good? Perfect. Thank you.
Hello and welcome to this North Penn News Update. I'm Rebecca Rosenblatt. Buckle your seat belts, we have much to cover in this update. The accolades keep rolling in for North Penn. The district has again been recognized by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency as the 2014 Energy Star Partner of the Year. On a stage that featured CEOs of some of the largest corporations, North Penn High School's senior and Energy Trooper President Nicole Hamilton accepted the Partner of the Year Award on behalf of the entire North Penn School District. Key accomplishments of the MPSD award-winning energy management program include receiving recognition as an Energy Star leader for 30 percent reduction and receiving the Energy Star label, avoiding $3.2 million in costs since the inception of the program, and partnering with Energy Star. The North Penn School District is one of only two school districts in Pennsylvania to receive the Energy Star Partner of the Year Award. The annual International Spring Festival brought the community together at North Penn High School to foster an understanding of cultural diversity. A parade of nations presenting the flags of various countries began the event. The festival featured booths, displays, and food from different countries, and there were also many cultural performances throughout the day. Around 5,000 people came to take part in all the day had to offer, including a health fair, art exhibits, instrument lessons, and more. With prom season in mind, North Penn High School seniors participated in a two-day event to raise awareness of the dangers of destructive decisions. Day one included a DUI reenactment with area emergency responders and comments from Montgomery County Judicial System. The next day, students heard the heartbreaking story of two mothers of students whose lives were changed forever at Senior Week. Seniors took those assemblies to heart as they attended the 2014 North Penn High School Senior Prom. An enchanting evening left North Penn seniors and guests spellbound. Over 1,000 students attended the prom at Drexel Book Ballroom, join host Selma Robinson, Amy Young, and Kevin Monero as they bring you the color and pageantry of this year's 2014 Senior Prom. North Penn Theater's production of Beauty and the Beast captivated audiences, young and old, during four stellar performances earlier this month. Ending on a high note, the Sunday matinees sold out all 1,717 seats in the auditorium. This is the first time in 10 years that any show has sold out a performance. The North Penn baseball team held an alumni game last weekend with over 40 alumni playing in the game. Alumni as far back as the class of 1957 came out to play on North Penn's field once again. The event also inaugurated the first Knights of Fame inductee, former baseball head coach Carl Garana. Garana was North Penn's first baseball coach, starting in 1955, and coached until 1980. Our PA State Champion Academic Decathlon Team returned from Hawaii with not only a tan, but with some impressive accomplishments. The team placed 16th overall and earned four medals. Jerry Zhao earned bronze in art and gold in math with a perfect score. Yang Yu won silver in math and gold in science with a perfect score. Congratulations to the members of the Academic Decathlon Team for their impressive accomplishments. Inglewood Elementary School continues to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the building, originally built in 1963. The entire student body took place in a picture to commemorate the year and prepare for the ribbon cutting and celebration later this month. And finally, our North Penn Television Team traveled to Temple University where they were nominated in seven different categories for National Student Television Awards. If you see an MP-TV member behind the camera, give them a pat on the back. But not too hard, because you might shake the camera. That is it for this North Penn News Update. I'm Rebecca Rosenblatt. Have a good night.
Welcome to our regularly-scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the Board President may ask the individuals to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome again. As we do, we like to start off our action meetings with some recognition of student accomplishments that make North Penn look really good, so we're going to start that off tonight. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are pleased this evening to recognize four groups. And the first group we'd like to recognize are members of the girls' basketball team. And with this evening, we have the full array of coaches with us, and we'd like to have them come forward at this time.
Good evening. My name is Maggie DiMariler, and I'm the head coach of the girls' basketball team at North Penn. And these are my assistant coaches Lauren Budwig and Dara Nelson. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. We are very, very honored, and we're extremely pleased with our season, with ourselves, to be honest.[412.81][412.81](Laughter). This year was the first time ever that North Penn Girls' Basketball has won the PIAA District One Championship, and we're very, very proud of that. We have -- these girls here have really developed a tradition of excellence. This is the third year in a row we've had a thousand-point scorer. That would be Vicki Tumas.[434.62][434.62](Laughter). It's the second -- it's the second year in a row that we've won the suburban one conference championship. It's the second year in a row that we've made it to the state quarterfinals. Next year, we're going to go a little bit further than that. But we've had to -- Vicki and Erin made first-team All-League. Vicki was named Intelligencer Player of the Year. Vicki was named third-team All-State. She was named -- what was she named? Second-team Inquirer, and Erin was third-team Inquirer. Our three seniors have been tremendous leaders. We've just had a great group of girls that worked really hard, got along really well. Our theme has been no drama, and I haven't seen any, so that's been a good thing. I don't know -- but they've set a great example of work ethic for our younger girls, and I really, truly believe, you know, that we are going to do better things in the future. So, I just want to introduce my girls now. Okay, Brianna Cullen.
Brianna, go ahead and run this one.
This one.[506.37][506.37](Applause).
Congratulations, too.
Michael Giuliani.
Congratulations, too.
Jess Huber. Erin Mayer. Gabby Moore. Ashley Pua. Julia Pua. Vicki Tumas. And Arissa Yi. And unable to be here tonight with us are Destiny Leininger, Tina Miller, Isabel Schwank, and Sam Karangi, and all contributed.
Please join in when they come through.
Okay.
Because I would love an opportunity for the full board and the administration to congratulate you and each one of you. This is the first group of students. I didn't have a problem looking down.[600.66][600.66](Laughter).
Congratulations again. Good luck, too. Congratulations again. Congratulations again. Congratulations again. Congratulations, too. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, too.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Erin.
How you doing?
How are you?
You, too.
Thank you so much.
You got the other girl.
Yes, I had them here, too.
Nice. Congratulations, too. Thank you.
Another round of applause, please.
We are also pleased to recognize this evening members of the North Penn High School Key Club. And with us this evening, we have those members and their advisor, Linda Law.
Hi, I'm Linda Law from North Penn High School. This is my Key Club members, our officers. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the girls' basketball team, since I am the Athletic Secretary. I spend a lot of time with the girls' team. Our Key Club is under the Lansdale Kiwanis Club. Key Club stands for Kiwanis Educating Youth. And basically, we do community service. As of last week, we have done 10,547 hours of community service. These young people standing here have a total of 958 hours just among the officers, so they are to be congratulated by that. We went to convention in March in Harrisburg. We came away with three trophies and lots of certificates for being distinguished officers doing their appropriate jobs. So, I'd like to recognize them tonight for a job well done. And then to invite you all on Memorial Day to our Memorial Day service at Pendale Middle School, which is at 11:30 if you'd care to attend. First up is Ryan Aragona. Chris Connell could not be with us this evening. He was the Lieutenant Governor for our district, which is 19 Central. Next up is Ricky Hollenbach. Madeline Katz. Colin Lynch. Adam Morrow. Grace Park. Alberaj Pudoda. And Jamie Sangalang. Thank you so much. Thank you for having us.
I always like to get a chance to ask the students where they're going, especially when our seniors graduating. In that group, we had four people going to Temple.
Temple, yeah.
We have a few graduates around this room from Temple. That was nice. Yeah, it smelled like somebody used to work there. You're up.
All right, thank you. The next group we would like to recognize are members of the North Penn High School Academic Decathlon Team. And with us this evening, we have those members and their advisor, Nancy Craig.
All right.
Come on forward.
While they're coming around, Nancy, that was an impressive news cycle. It's going to run quite a lot.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nancy Craig, and I am the coach of this year's Academic Decathlon Team, and I'm very honored to be the coach of these wonderful students here from North Penn. For those of you that are unfamiliar with exactly what Academic Decathlon is, this is a national, and as I found out, an international, because there were international teams when we were in Hawaii. And they compete in 10 different events, which math -- you're going to help me here if I miss one. Math, science, economics, music, art, language lit, social science, interview, speech, and essay. Got them all. And the theme, there's a theme every year, and this theme, the theme this year was the World War I, basically because 1914 is the 100th year anniversary of the beginning of World War I. Academic Decathlon has been at North Penn for a while, but this group basically are the -- have the honor of being the second group to have a state championship here at North Penn High School two years in a row, and we've never done that before, so I congratulate them on that. We have two seniors here, Aubrey Kendredine and Maisha Islam. We have juniors, Damian Danaraj, Serena Zhang, who was a member of last year's state team. In order there, we have Noah Lamb, Chris Seibel, and Jerry Zhao there, also juniors, and we have one freshman on the team, Yang Yu, who was very impressive as nationals.
So, we'll see him a bunch of times.
Yang got a national medal in -- a silver in mathematics and a gold in science with a perfect score of 1,000. Jerry Zhao also brought medals from nationals, and he got a bronze in art and a gold in mathematics with a perfect score of 1,000.
That's impressive.
So, I would like to introduce the team to you. First, we have Damian Danaraj. Maisha Islam. Serena Zhang. Aubrey Kendredine. Noah Lamb. Chris Seibel. Yang Yu. And Jerry Zhao.
Guys, as an opportunity, as we circle around, we're going to congratulate each and everyone from the central administration and the full board, so please come through. Nancy, would you join them at the end?
All right. And thank you very much for having us.
No problem. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Well done. Well done. Well done. You're on camera tonight.
Oh, I could.
Mr. Yu, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mr. Zhao, congratulations again. Well done. Oh, Nancy, where did Nancy's award go? Congratulations. You know, I have an award for you. It disappeared. Somebody took it.
Somebody stole it.
I don't know. I'll have to get it all.
They deserve it.
Oh, you did for them. Yeah, but you know what? You got us supported. Another round of applause for these guys, please.
We are also pleased this evening to recognize members of the North Penn High School Stars, and Nancy is going to sub in for Melody Lighthold. So, Nancy, thank you for doing that, and if you would please, students come forward, and Nancy can make some introductions.
And even though I was -- I'm not responsible for these three very intelligent young men, I'm very delighted to be here, and I will be reading what Melody left on each one of them. Okay, Colin and Sam were chosen from the senior class to represent North Penn High School at the Delaware Valley Science Council exams. They achieved scores higher than over 300 other seniors. Sam was recognized as an outstanding scholar by the Delaware Valley Science Council and by giving the Excellence in Science Award from the American Society of Mechanical Engineers. Colin was also recognized as an outstanding scholar by the Delaware Valley Science Council and was named as recipient of the Science Achievement Award from the Delaware Valley Science Council as well. In addition to the science exams, Colin participated in the Montgomery County Science Research Competition where he placed second in the senior medicine and health category. Jonathan entered the Montgomery County Research Competition in the Junior High Physics category. He received a first place with his project on quantum entanglement. This entered him into the same division as the next level, the Delaware Valley Science Fair. He won a first, then competed against the other first-place winners to take home a gold medal. Jonathan won a gold medal two years in a row. This is the first time this has been done in the history of Delaware Fairs. Congratulations, gentlemen. And I'd like to introduce them then to you. Sam Curley. Colin Lynch. And Jonathan Okazinski.
All right, guys, we're going to ask you to come through so everyone can congratulate you, so take your time. Come on around for the full board and the administration, please.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, so you know where to go.
And we're going to go.
Congratulations again, sir. We're going to see you again.
We're headed to college.
So proud of you.
Well done again. Please, another round of applause for these guys. All right. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. As again, these guys reflect well on the school district, and it's an amazing opportunity to congratulate them, acknowledge their achievements, and to see them here. So, it's always entertaining and always absolutely informative to see how far our kids can go for success. All right, it is time for Audience of Citizens. Anybody wishing to speak to the board during our action meeting, please feel free to step forward, state your name and address, sign the Audience of Citizens logbook for us.
Good evening. And my name is William Pacheco. I live at 404 Bonnie Lane in Lansdale. Firstly, I want to thank the board for their tireless effort, week after week, year after year, trying to make the district one of the finest in the Commonwealth and also in the country. I'm sure that many districts throughout the country look at our district as an example of what they could do or trying to do, and although we are really -- it's wonderful to have these type of students enrolled in our district, you know? It's imperative that we bring everybody along in all areas, and it's very important that the country recognize those that are falling behind in many areas and are not being brought along, and sometimes we do focus on those that are high achievers. They get all the accolades, but the people who are following behind really don't get the resources. Not that that happens here, but in many poor rural or inner-city districts, they really don't have the resources, they don't have the infrastructure to be able to bring everybody along. Well, I'll move along. Tonight's topic is, I've been talking about concussions and physical conditions. Well, on April 14, I requested through the right-to-know a summary of the body mass in the case of how many students are obese, how many people are overweight. Well, to say the least, I was pretty shocked. I didn't realize that it was being tracked quite like it was, but when I read these statistics, I have them by the school. We have a bridle path. Out of 571 students, we have 120 that are either obese or near obese, okay? We have Gwinnor Elementary, 613 students. We have a cumulative total in the bottom two percentile of 146.
Hey, Bill. Did you total that and just talk in general terms, like elementary versus secondary?
Well, I was going school by school, because apparently in some areas, it's more prevalent than others.
Well, I'm just asking, do you have to to make your point?
Okay, what I'm saying is, I went through the whole group, and approximately, I'm pretty shocked, 30 percent of this district is obese and near obese. That is unacceptable in a society that supposedly having nutritional training and --
I mean, in all respects.
Yeah, what I'm trying to say is --
It's not your opinion, but what, it's as if it's a family's responsibility? I mean, I'm -- We do so, we do so.
What I'm trying to say is --
I mean, you know.
When we take the child and we promise to educate them academically and physically to make the total person the type that will be successful in adult life, I'm not going to have people graduate prediabetic, obese.
Yeah, but how are you going to stop that? Look, I mean, I'm overweight.
What I'm saying is, if you're offering AP courses, and you're offering languages, and you're offering various other things, you need to recognize and say, you know what? We're going to have to give you some extra physical training, because to have a person with six AP courses --
We do have health as a mandatory class. PE requires that. Phys ed is also a requirement. Matter of fact, we have more of that. We have a higher PE requirement than most, actually, it's required.
Okay. I'm saying is, do you feel that a graduation rate, I'll give you the one for North Penn High School. Apparently, there must be too many pizzas and Doritos, okay?
It's probably a pretty popular food with kids.
And when my son went to college, he had to meet a certain criteria of body mass, or you can't come.
Yeah, I think the ADA is going to come and have a conversation with you about that.
Okay, I'm just bringing it out to the general public. To have a student body that is that overweight or near overweight is totally unacceptable, and I think either people are apathetic or they're, I don't know what the problem is, but it needs to be corrected. When you have a sports program, and you know the one that I'm after, you have 99 kids where resources are poured in, where they do have serious injuries, to have 3,000 kids that are obese or near, something's wrong.
Yeah, but it's not the school.
Okay, I'm just saying. I'm here to inform the public, to inform the board, that at some time, you need to institute, to have a child in an elementary school, the first day you're obese, I'm sorry, Mrs. Smith, we're going to have to have a special remedial class for your child.
You can't do that.
You can't do that? I'm telling you what. Then you can take the responsibility of turning a child, after they complete their education here, oh, you're obese. You mean, in all that time, no one ever even mentioned about that you were obese?
Oh, Bill, come on.
Okay, well, we'll move on.
We have health classes.
Okay, we'll move on.
But I'm bringing it to --
Okay, we'll move on, but I'm bringing it to your attention. I'm bringing it to your attention. If you, the reason the diabetic situation in this country is so bad is because they have so many obese people, and, no, oh, we can't touch that, you know, we can't, anyway.
Honestly, God, write editorial papers to parents and the students that they should, I mean, you can't, you can't mandate something like that.
You know, the parents, I guess some of these kids might only have one parent.
He has, he has time, please, go ahead, Bill, continue.
Okay. That's that topic. Now I'll move on. We're going to go to the, to the football thing. We're going to go to the football thing. Now, we haven't started the season yet, but you know we'll be revving up in just a short while. In Los Angeles, they require preseason cognitive testing for football players. Do they do that here? Okay, well, what they do in Los Angeles...
We have impact, but not, no, he's, she's, he's just talking about in general.
Okay. In Los Angeles, they've instituted a preseason cognitive testing, which if a player suffers a concussion, he's given a post-concussion test, and that is compared to the pre, to the preseason, it's called the Heads Up Football Program, and you can Google it because it's there.
Bill, that is something we do, if somebody's experienced that.
Okay. If a player is adjudged to have suffered a concussion, they should be evaluated against the preseason test, and if you do that, that's wonderful, okay? It is imperative, in this sport, any sport where they're suffering these cranial injuries, it is imperative that each sport, all parents meet with the coaches and the athletic trainer, and be given a lecture on concussions and their long-term effects, and they sign that, not like, oh, I'm just checking the box here. They need to attend a class, and you need to show me you have health insurance. Now, somebody wants to play football, somebody wants to play a sport, you show me you have health insurance, because it's a federal law, and it's...
I think we do that already.
No, okay? What I, okay, what I want is, not a check-in of a box, you will show me your insurance papers, the number and the company. I'm not going for signing a check-in a box.
Yeah, they have to provide the insurance carrier and their policy number to us.
Okay, if we're doing that, that's excellent, okay? Do we have a policy that when a person wants to play a sport, that they do have coverage? That they do have real medical coverage? Not the Boehringer policy, that's an accident policy. What I'm trying to tell you, to let a child, and they are a child, you need to show me you have full medical health insurance to play this sport.
I don't think that's a requirement.
Okay, well, I think that would be a great policy for the district, because, okay...
That may be some serious litigation issues there.
What? Oh, I'm sure that the federal government would back you up because...
You're requiring me to do something not required by law, to participate in a sport I have a right to.
Oh, I hear it's by the federal law, it's called the Affordable Medical Care Act. You will have insurance, or you'll pay a penalty, okay? So they are breaking the law, am I correct? It is the law.
When does it go in, when is it completely in effect?
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's what I'm saying is, and do you think that it would be positive that if a child was playing a sport, wouldn't you feel better that that child had medical coverage? Wouldn't you feel better? Wouldn't you feel better telling the parent, you know what, we have this other policy, you know it runs out after five years, if your, if your child's on disability, you know, you know how that'll work out? I don't know really understand. That's not, that's not an acceptable situation for a child, and to expect a child to have medical coverage? I didn't say, I didn't, but the requirement in North Penn School District is, you will have full medical coverage. Now, you know they go in and out, the father lost a job or somebody, but you know, even through economic circumstances, you can get chips. You will have chips. Having no money is not a, is not a, is not a criteria anymore. You will have coverage. And I know people are playing the ostrich, oh, I don't think I'll get it, I can't afford it, I went to the, I went to dot org, whatever it was, and I couldn't get on it, that is not an acceptable answer. Every child needs to prove and have medical coverage. It's by law, and you need to enforce it. As the district, you can do that, okay? You're one of the gatekeepers to make sure people adhere to the federal law. It even supersedes Harrisburg, it's hard to believe, yes, but you need to do that.
Well, I don't understand, Bill.
Yes.
About a year and a half, I was here a year and a half, two years ago, you were standing at that same podium, saying that we can't be all things to all people, we just can't afford to do everything that we want to do.
That is true.
All right, but now you're here advocating that we increase the amount of service levels to enforce certain policies we're not even authorized to enforce, and there's an expense that goes along with that, so who's going to pay for that?
Okay, you're required by law to do the body mass. Every single child coming into North Penn Dole School District, well, they have all the, the body mass...
But you're going further than that.
So now you need to ask them, well, where's your health insurance?
You're going further than that.
You're doing it already.
You're going further than that.
To require, to require someone to have health insurance, you're adhering to the federal law. Now, I know a lot of people don't like it, a lot of people in the media want to, want to vote it out, and a lot of people wish it never happened, but you know where we are? We've got it. And you need to be, make people perform.
Okay, so you're a stat, you want us to establish a bureaucracy to, to check, well, that's what you're asking, Bill.
What I'm saying...
That's what you're asking. You're asking to establish an administrative process, also known as a bureaucracy, to check people for health insurance before they play a sport. So who is going to do that?
You're going to say, son?
Who is going to say that?
The coach of the sport?
He's just busy enough.
Joe, that's public comment, let him...
Okay, what I'm saying, if you feel confident letting kids play with a Boehringer policy, well, you know, that's, that's okay. In your view, we agree to disagree. Okay?
It's not about being comfortable, it's about adhering to laws and preserving people's individual rights to do, to make their own decisions.
Then you know what? You can choose not to get, you can choose not to get health insurance, but before you suit up, you're not going to play. If you don't have health insurance, it's our prerogative to say, no, you can't play. Is, is, is that the policy?
You can't play without our coverages, but he's talking about full medical insurance by the family, which you can't require as a, as a playing requirement. Yeah, and we, we actually do that, that's part of our process.
Okay. I think it would be very good if the district took a lead in this thing, to say, you know what, oh, yeah, North Penn sort of, oh, you know what they did? They raised the bar that people have health coverage, and I'll tell you what, if a child, if a child doesn't have health coverage, do you think he's going to be at, really, at the same level as someone else? No. You have, you have to be an example to the Commonwealth, where all the other districts look at you and say, oh, well, you have...
You realize you're, you're advocating a, a policy or a practice that discriminates against poor people, because they can't afford insurance.
Yes, they can, they get a subsidy.
Well, you, you just mentioned chips. Chips has a criteria that you have to meet. If you don't meet that financial criteria, you can't get chips, it doesn't work that way.
If you have zero income, you will get chips for nothing.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, zero income, sure. But understand what you're advocating, Bill.
I mean, just because you want to spend money in other areas...
Bill, I appreciate your, your passion for this issue, but you're asking for us to enforce a law that doesn't exist.
Well, I hope you take that under consideration, that, and I hope that we don't have any injuries, and I hope that the repercussions down the road, he says, you know what, he had a broken neck, and I once again said, if I was a parent, I wouldn't sign the waiver to play any of these sports, because Pop Warner's down by 20%, and people are finally getting the word on what's going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else, please? All right, I want to move the agenda forward, I want to recommend approval of the minutes of the April 10th, 2014 action meeting, and the May 6th, 2014 Special Action Meeting and Work Session as circulated.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Charnock, comments or questions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I was, I was ready to say something, did you see, poor Joe's over here, he's back like 12 minutes already, he's got a headache. All right, I have a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Welcome back, Joe. All right, let's start with her committee reports, and I'm going to start with Mr. Schilling and Support Services.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling, we have not have, we have not had a Support Service meeting since the last board meeting, so our next meeting is May 27th, that's a Tuesday, at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. End of report. That's a Tuesday, yeah.
6:00 PM here.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Any questions for Support Services? Okay. Education, Community, and Policy.
That's me, thank you. The ECP Committee met this past Monday, May 12th. On the agenda were several policies for the committee to consider. Two policies came from the nutrition, School Nutrition Services Department. There was Board Policy 5143 regarding family fiscal responsibility, which was revised. Specific procedural information that could be subject to frequent revision was removed from the policy and placed in a regulation. In addition, some clarifying language was added regarding the My Payments Plus system. The other Board Policy 5145 concerning free and reduced lunches was rewritten to remove outdated language and reflect the current USDA verbiage. The, the School Nutrition Family Fiscal Responsibility was the policy that was brought up previously with, if lunch, if you can't make payment, and how many times, and the procedure, and how, and how to do that. Also, the Technology Department presented two new policies. One of the policy concerns the use of personal electronic devices by NPSD staff while at work. All devices must be password-protected. The other policy provides guidelines for responsible and acceptable use of the district computer network, including connection to the Internet as well as associated hardware and software. Also, emails are required to be archived for seven years. The final policy presented to the committee was Board Policy 5118, which addresses non-resident attendance. Revisions were made to this policy so that would be in compliance with the PA Basic Education Circular, or BEC, and applicable state statutes. In addition, the committee received an update on the progress of soliciting advertisements. For the 2014-15 school calendar, advertisements have been sold for five out of 10-month calendar pages. However, given the level of interest, the expectation is that all sales will be complete before the calendar goes to print. Also, existing advertisers are renewing their ads, and feedback from the advertisers and the community has been positive. The next ECP Committee meeting will be June 9th at 6:30 PM. I think we got an update on the advertising, I think year-to-date, we're at $46,000, so that was, that was pretty good to hear.
That's phenomenal, are you thinking about splitting up the months to get more space?
I was thinking of buying one myself.
Are you going on a weekly calendar, or are you thinking about trying to rack up a few extra pages on that calendar? Because 12 months is not a heck of a lot.
Well, the summer months are combined.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
That's even worse. Could we, could you do it every? I should ask Christine, Christine, is that, is it, I've seen other school districts do it that way. Have mul, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we can, we've got space in the back, there's lots of places for us, just very...
Good for us. Thank you, any questions of ECP? Thank you, June 9th is your next meeting. The North Penn Educational Foundation, Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you. It has been an exciting and profitable month for the foundation, because May 2nd was a $10,000 day for the foundation, $10,000 for our foundation, fantastic. First, our inaugural May Day Online Auction closed in net of more than $3,500. For those of you who didn't get into the action, this auction featured one-of-a-kind North Penn experiences, including birthday parties in our planetarium and swimming pool, your Charles fixture of the district calendar, VIP commencement seats, lunch with your principal, and more. One generous staff member outbid her coworkers for the Walk in Our Shoes package, in which a cabinet member of her choice must do her job for a few hours. Good luck to Dr. Dietrich, who will be a cafeteria monitor at Napp Elementary School in the next coming weeks. I think I'd like to go see that. The foundation is thrilled with the response that got to this fundraiser, which we planned small, it was our first. We exceeded our expectations, not only in how much money we raised, but also exposure to the foundation. More than 3,000 people visited the online auction website, so obviously, we hope to do this again next year. Then, on the evening of May 2nd, North Penn Night at the Phillies, the foundation hit it out of the ballpark and added another $6,500 to its coffers. As the chosen charity of the 50-50 raffle at the Phillies game, we were the winners. I want to thank the Phillies organization for their generous partnership in this endeavor. Although the Phillies lost the game, watching the scoreboard that evening, as the 50-50 and it grew, at the end, it really went fast, was a huge excitement for everyone. Trustees are also busy planning our golf classic, which will be held Monday, August 18th, at the Pinecrest Golf Course. We are looking for both golfers and business sponsors at this time. And our student representatives, Taylor Young and Erin Hubner, are working on a student fundraiser with Reed's Water Ice. In grant news, we received 38 grant requests for the 2014-2015 school year, and we'll be reviewing those requests next week. We also received thank-you notes from Penfield ESL students who visited a Colonial Plantation, thanks to the foundation. In fact, Tuesday, we all got a thank-you note, it was really, very nice. And I'd like to introduce to you our newest trustee across the room from me, Steve Shrocky. His experience on the other educational foundations will be a great resource for us, and I thank him with enthusiasm for joining us, and we look forward to working with you next year. Any questions about the foundation can be directed to Christine Liberowski at the ESC. Christine is here this evening, and we thank her for all her hard work and her team with the foundation. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Finances, Mrs. Turner, tonight.
Thank you. My report isn't as exciting as the Educational Foundation report. Regular items were all reviewed, and there were no questions or discussion on normal business operations. Mr. O'Donnell questioned what an appropriate fund balance should be for the enterprise funds, and would like the business office to discuss the matter with the district auditor, Malie, Malley?
Malley Fockenarrow.
Thank you. Perhaps the district could create a policy for each of the enterprise funds regarding fund balance. The North Monco TCC budget, the tech center, had a budget increase of 1.42%, which came out to about $47,000. The North Penn School District share equals about $3.4 million in total tuition. Under Other Business for the 2014-15 Proposed Financial Bud, Final Budget, Steve Shrocky gave a PowerPoint presentation on the proposed final budget for next year. Bond Issue Update, we are looking at options for the next bond issue, where we will need to borrow approximately $19.4 million. We are looking at obtaining two separate bond issues of $10 million each. This will be brought forward in June for approval, and then it will close in July. The items moved to Work Session Action Meeting, we have the monthly budget transfers for tonight's action meeting. North Monco Technical Career Center budget also on tonight's meeting, and the 2014-15 Proposed Final Budget as well at tonight's meeting. The next Finance Committee meeting will be Tuesday, May 27th at 6:30.
Thank you. Any questions of Finance this evening? Safe Schools, Mrs. Leonard, would that be you tonight?
No.
Did you have, oh, Mrs. Murphy, thank you.
She hasn't been off. I don't know how it happened, it just did.
The Safe Schools Committee met on May 5th and discussed the following. Mr. Wilson detailed that the emergency procedures book was updated and will be rolled out to all faculty. He is working on a template with the country, with the county, excuse me, EOC in Montgomery Elementary, and he hopes to have it used as a starting point for all other schools. An all-hazards plan. Mr. Wilson explained that an all-hazards plan is specific to each individual building, and it's crucial, because every building has different circumstances that must be considered in the event of an extreme emergency. He also shared that evacuation training and drills are currently being held more frequently, which we know is so important in the safety of our children. He also shared that the senior prom went very well this year, and there was no need to send anyone home, so that's also cause for joy. Mr. Schubel reported that 60 new Pendo cameras are mounted, and we are waiting for a router. The Pendo cameras provide building wide cu, building-wide coverage. The vendor submitted a proposal for Pembroke, and will be submitting a proposal for the Penfield project. Future camera installations, including Pembroke and Penfield, may be, have to wait until funding is available. Tornado drills also will occur on May 12th and 13th, they've already occurred, I guess, for all schools. New camera monitors were received and installed for the elementary schools, some still need a connection to the camera computer in the building. Mr. Schubel also informed the committee of the MPHS Security Fencing Project. The project is on schedule and is slated to be completed before graduation in early June. Mr. Schubel reviewed planning of proposed lobby renovations for Gwinor, Bridle Path, Gwinnett Square, Napp, Oak Park, and Walton Farm Elementary Schools. These renovations will be completed when funding is available, and that's how we ended that discussion. The next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee is scheduled for July 1st, 2014. Yes, we're going, we decided to meet every other month, even if it was in the summer, at 6:30 at the ESC. Respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Any questions for Safe Schools tonight? Okay, Personnel... Personnel had, I'll report, we had no meeting this month. We hope to resume shortly. Let's move to North Monco Technical Career Center. Do we, were you at the meeting?
I was not.
Okay. No report then? Our representative is not here. Let's move forward with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. Mrs. Murphy, you're back on.
I know. The April meeting of the MCIU was held on April 22 at the building on West Main Street in Norristown. The Board of Directors recognized Roseanna Gale, Non-Public School Services Reading Specialist, who was awarded the 2013-14 Bobby S. Goodman Award, named in memory of a former MCIU reading specialist in the Non-Public Services Division. Dr. Voss presented the 2015 Non-Public School Services Division budget for first reading. The budget will be presented for action at the May 21, 2014 meeting. Budget highlights are as follows. The division is proposing 12 million, also $12 million budget for the 14-15 school year. More than 91% of the funding comes from the Act 89 state funds. The division also receives state and federal programs and grants, including title funds and homeless funding. And just for information, over half of all the non-pubs are in Montgomery County. We have the largest non-public, you know, students of any other part of Pennsylvania. The MCIU's Non-Public School Services, as we said, is the largest director of services also to students in eligible non-public schools under Act 89 and the Commonwealth. There are 26,197 eligible non-public school students in Montgomery County, and we do work very closely with those schools. The Board approved a request for administrative leave for Dr. Jerry Shively, effective at the close of business on April 25, and appointed Dr. Bradley Landis to serve as a substitute executive director. The Board also approved a contract with Ray and Associates to provide services to search for a new executive director. It will be a national search. The Board approved the resolution opposing restricting federal medical assistance reimbursement. The next MCIU Board of Directors will be May 21, next Wednesday, at the MCIU. Respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy.
Any questions for the Montgomery County IU report?
They just started changing.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did they choose that firm, or like PSBA, or was that one of the firms?
No, it was, you know, they looked at several firms, and that's the one that we came up with.
Okay. Nice to know, because I know that PSBA participates in a lot of those searchers.
They do, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Executive session, the public should be aware that the full board did meet executive session May 15, 2014, from 6:30 PM to 7:30 PM to discuss matters of personnel, litigation, and negotiations tonight. We're going to move forward with the superintendent's report. Dr. Dietrich, you're back on.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do recommend approval of an agreement for tuition in lieu of free and appropriate education for students whose names are on file in the Office of the Superintendent as listed, namely 0515141, 0515142, and 0515143.
Motion by Mr. Schilling.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of six summer school programs for 2014 as listed per item 2214 A through D.
Motion by Mr. Schilling.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Leonard. Comments or questions? The summer, some of those summer programs, they rotate from building to building. This is-
Correct. They are, John has a meeting every year, and we decide what building those programs will be located in for that summer.
Gotcha. Isn't it a requirement that we move them? Is it, or just we do that for, I know we take schools that are air-conditioned, easy access, not under construction, that kind of stuff. Is that what we do?
Yep.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to move the academic discussion in peer tutoring, the engineering projects in community service, and the Science Olympiad extra-duty clubs and their advisors from probationary status to official status. And furthermore, to reduce the number of middle-school indoor guard positions from five positions to three positions per item 2314 A through B.
Motion by Mr. Schilling. Second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval for adoption of textbooks as listed per item 2414.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy. Second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? I just wondered, like, it's very generic, but I noticed that some of the dates on those books were like 2012, which may be the most early, I guess, the most common one. Is there any way to predict the changeovers in some of those books?
Not, there really isn't a way to predict when the publisher will bring out a new edition in most textbooks.
The Office 2013, are we rolling that out?
Yes.
As for the students, too? Or is it just for employees?
It is, it's for that particular class that teaches that particular package at this time. We are not rolling that out for all staff and all students at this point in time.
Do we charge material fees for some of these things? Or is that just a lab-type of thing for special sciences or something?
I'd need to check on that. I'm not sure if we charge materials fees for the technology courses.
I'd like to know, because I know that a lot of 2013 is cloud-based, and it requires other things for the students.
Yep. I can check on that for you.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the adoption of the novel listed under item 2514.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy. Second by Mrs. Leonard. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the proposed 2014-15 North Monco Technical Career Center budget, namely, the general fund budget in the amount of $11,238,757, of which North Penn's share is $3,407,612, which does represent an increase of $47,593, or 1.42%. North Penn's share of the debt service, $317,618, so the grand total on the general fund budget for North Penn then would be $3,725,230. Also, the continuing education fund budget in the amount of $785,75, the food service budget in the amount of $155,265, and the production control budget in the amount of $135,500.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling. Second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? No clarity on what grand total means, and then you add up a whole bunch of other numbers after that? Just the wording, I think. North Monco's been a big asset to us for a long time. All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the professional services agreement with the Tryon Group to provide medical program consulting services in the amount of $75,000 per year. The final form of the agreement to be subject to the approval of the Solicitor's Office. The set agreement is on file in the Office of Business Administration.
I need a motion. Motion by Mrs. Charnock. Second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions?
Just supposed to say, "Thank you very much."
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Recommend approval of bids per item BA4A through Q as listed.
Motion by Mr. Schilling. Second?
Second.
Anybody? Second by Mrs. Leonard. Thank you. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Bids are approved.
I recommend approval of the personnel items listed under A, B, and C.
Motion by Mr. Schilling. Second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend approval of student travel per item BA7.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy. Second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of contracts per item BA8A through B, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Sullivan. Second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of alternative placements per item BA9, copies of which are on file in the Office of Special Education.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling. Second by Mr. Schilling? I'm sorry. Mr. Sullivan. Second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion approved. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. You know, you guys are acting like my senior students, like the year's over already or something.
It's never, yeah. It's been for your son.
Finance report, Mr. Shock.
Yes, this is the financial report for the month of April 2014. Cash receipts for April totaled $4,494,181.14. Cash disbursements for April totaled $14,648,166.18, leaving total funds available of $90,141,125. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Shock. Let's move forward. By the way, is this your last report, or are you still here for next one, right?
Next to last.
Let's move forward with sanction and approval of invoices.
I recommend approval of disbursements to be sanctioned for the month of April 2014 in the amount of $15,847,121.24, and disbursements to be approved for the month of May 2014 in the amount of $1,892,745.34.[1558.36]